Testing one, two, test one, two. Oh, okay. Testing one, two, test one, two. Okay, but this, okay, so we're back. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call back to order. Please take your seats. We're gonna continue on with, um, uh, in-person public, uh, comments from the community members. And next, we have Helena Craig.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Helena Craig. I live at ten seventeen Old Oxford Road, which is five hundred feet from Hamlin Road, also with Oxford-Hamlin Coalition. For myself, it's really two very easy things. One, we have not been satisfied. We feel like the community engagement was disingenuous and at times almost disrespectful. Um, there were three meetings because the first meeting was not recorded and there were some fairly incendiary things said there, um, but there's no recording of it. The second meeting was held, no new information was shared. And the third meeting was scheduled to make up for the one that wasn't recorded. We weren't even notified. So the third meeting basically had no reason to exist if we weren't gonna be invited. Uh, secondly, I think it's a fairly easy answer here. This property is wholly outside of the urban growth boundary that many of us spend a lot of time and energy and resources defining for a reason. Um, I don't see any particular reason that this brings value to Durham County, Durham City, to nearby residents. We've lived in this community well before Welcome Venture Park existed. Um, there's still plenty of opportunity for there to be housing, but the number of, the amount of traffic, the number of residents, the lack of road improvements, the lack of any real oversight, given that they haven't been honest with us in community engagement, it's just not clear what benefit there is to the broader community. And then the last thing I wanted to raise is that I feel like we, in talking to ourselves, were not clear that the inconsistencies were clear in the, um, presentation from staff. So it is one inconsistent with the place type and it's two inconsistent with the urban growth boundary by my understanding. So we were hoping to see that slide again.
Thank you. I believe, uh, city staff is ready to answer. Yes, please.
So, yeah, I, I mean, the, uh, I'll try to be, be more clear about that, yes. Um, it is inconsistent with, uh, the urban growth boundary. It is inconsistent with the place type of rural and agricultural reserve because that is intended to be outside the urban growth boundary. So if it's in, we would change it. And because they can do multiple place types within a conservation subdivision, which they've indicated they intend to do, um, uh, the mixed residential neighborhood seems to make the most sense to allow for those additional housing types. And then also, as Peyton mentioned, it is consistent with three of seven annexation policies found in the Durham Comprehensive Plan, which on the flip side means it's inconsistent with four of seven.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim- Kimberly Warren. Can, I didn't know if those are Ts or Rs, I'm sorry.
My name is Kimberly Warren. I've lived at eight twenty-six Cartman Drive since nineteen ninety-three. It's part of the... Did I start over? Did you hear it? My name's Kimberly Warren. I live at eight twenty-six Cartman Drive. Um, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-three. It's part of the Oxford-Hamlin neighborhood. I came today to support the urban growth boundary. I've been aware of all the work and thought and care that went into setting that boundary where it is. And I'd like to see it respected. Chipping away at it, especially so soon, seems to me to risk making it meaningless in our neighborhood and elsewhere. I did go to the May Zoom meeting where other neighbors met with the owners and the developer. And it seemed to me that the main argument was that the current owners of the land had been made to understand that it would be simple to get city water and sewer services to support the eighty homes proposed and that it's been an unhappy surprise that it's not simple. And sadly, in our neighborhood, I've seen much of that disappointment, expectations about water and sewer. It's not simple. People are upset and disappointed. And I'm sorry that that's the owner's situation, um, that the expectations were incorrect. But that didn't seem to me a good reason to change the urban growth boundary and annex the property into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak that's in person that did not sign up? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Yvonne Sanchez and I am a property owner on Hamlin Road, seventeen twenty-four and seventeen twenty-six. So I'm probably the nearest one to all of this. Um, this is all new to me, but thanks to Natalie. She's been informing the owners and it just takes a little bit of our time to come and express our thoughts. So, um, I've seen all the traffic going on, on Hamlin Road, especially with Venture Park being nearby. And it's a two-way road. It's just coming and going. And I have little pets that I try to walk and it's hard because if I cross over to the industrial park area, police are there thinking that I'm trying to break in. That's the word. They had break-ins. So I'm very, like, secluded into my property because the roads are kind of dangerous with all this traffic, especially Carver Road that opened up. So I love the rural area. I love that, um, Hamlin Road is, um, has all these residential homes. But now it's starting to become like subdivision and it's starting to affect the city, which we are not the city. We're the county. So I am just trying to be here to support, um, the Oxford-Hamlin community and start being a part of it and just being behind scenes and just letting them do everything. So I'm just supporting them and trying to see that, you know, we keep it as rural as we can and, um, have, you know, at least bus routes if we're gonna do it, go this way or bike lanes. I don't see any of that happening or wanting to happen. It's just adding more and more to stress to our streets. So, um, thank you for hearing me and hopefully I'll get more informed and be on top of things. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak here before I move on to the Zoom? You're the applicant. Let me, let me finish with all the community comment and then I'll come back to the applicant. Okay? Thank you. Uh, on the Zoom, we have Mimi Kessler.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Um, my name's Mimi Kessler. I live on Woodland Drive in Durham. I also want to speak in favor of keeping the UGB as being sacred. I, I think that there is sufficient, um, uh, concern about the city just encroaching bit by bit on the rural areas of the county. And I feel very strongly that we need to keep those, um, as the, the UGB undisturbed. I also want to say that, that the graphic that the applicant put up with the border of the, um, of the property being the mature trees that plan to be saved. But I also want to make sure that if this goes through, that the, um, root systems of the trees on the edge are not compromised. So then it needs to be a buffer, um, that is not right next to the trees. And I also agree with, uh, Robin Barefoot that, uh, the conservation subdivision, um, requirements have been, um, diluted. And so it's not, it's not as much of a positive as it used to be. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. Thank you. We have Ken Pugh. No, that's not Ken Pugh. We have Caitlin Kemskey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Caitlin Kemskey and I currently live at sixteen twenty Magnolia Oak Place, which is within city limits. But I also own twenty-two acres at two twenty Riley Drive, which is off Hamlin Road near the intersection with Oxford and within the Oxford-Hamlin community. As Natalie mentioned, conversations have not been productive. During the first official meeting, we were presented with a false binary choice. Approve this or get something worse. And a narrative that the Kates were owed this while they are not. Billy challenged this narrative near the thirty-seven minute mark and pointed out that it is not the choice before us. We have been repeatedly told of the straw poll to include the property in the UGB, but the later actual votes did not include it. While this was stated, we are never told why it was ultimately not included in the UGB and surely there were reasons. I brought this up in the written questions, which were read by Natalie during the meeting near the thirty-one minute mark, but we never got answers. Near the fifty-three minute mark, uh, he said that he'd reach out after the meeting to follow up with us, um, provide documents, address our questions. And we gave him our email addresses, but I was never contacted. As for what was said today about it being profitable for Durham around twenty thirty-three, I think is the year he mentioned, um, what will it cost for the roads and schools before then? How crowded are the affected schools already? Hamlin Road is already narrow, busy, and dangerous. How would this be fixed without negatively affecting the homes along it that do not have huge front yards where space could easily be taken? This property is outside of the UGB and we should not be moving that boundary to increase suburban sprawl in the rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Malora McCall. Go ahead.
Thank you, Malora McCall. Address on file. This annexation request is outside the UGB and it's in the interest of a single property owner and does not meet the standard of being reasonable or in the public interest. Residents are acutely aware that the exceptions made to the UGB set a lasting precedent impacting rural communities, the critical watershed and drinking water sources, natural heritage areas, and the surrounding voluntary agricultural districts. Such a precedent would weaken the integrity of our comprehensive plan and the values it represents. Values intended to guide land use planning in a thoughtful, consistent, and equitable way. Staff have indicated that the applicant has not demonstrated a clear community benefit as required by policy. Instead, we've heard generalized statements. At neighborhood meetings, the applicant suggested that annexation would quote-unquote, "allow them to preserve hardwood trees along the used-assed property line", framing preservation as a condition of approval rather than a baseline expectation. This tactic, implying that ecological resources might be lost if the proposal is not approved, is a troubling but familiar strategy to quiet legitimate community concerns. The implications of this annexation go far beyond one property owner's financial benefit when selling land to a developer. And the applicants have elected to take forward an application that disregards alignment with Durham's long-term growth strategy. Durham County agriculture is already facing intense development pressure. And upholding policy one sixty-eight, which clearly outlines three specific criteria an applicant must meet, is one way the city can balance competing county and city growth needs. The proposal does not meet those criteria. It's not exceptional and it's not deserving of exceptions to policies such as one sixty-five, which planning staff much must recommend against when it serves primarily in the interest of a single property owner. I urge you to protect the integrity of our policies, the health of our natural resources, and the long-term vision for Durham's growth by voting against this annexation request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Owens.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Hi, uh, my name is Nicole Owens. I actually live at twenty-one hundred Hamlin Road, like kitty-corner from this property, as that suggested. When we first heard about what was happening, what was being discussed was a few homes, not eighty-one units. The fact that eighty-one units in this area, I can't even imagine the impact that eighty-one units and the people that belongs to those eighty-one units would have in an already overcrowded area. The, it's just a two-way street, which we now have so much more traffic on. We had a huge development a couple of hundred yards away that took away thirty acres' worth of trees. Everything in the area has changed. And instead of seeing the wildlife that we should be seeing, all we can hear is street noise now. And now we wanna add eighty-one more units right next to Ino, the Ino River, in between the Ino River and Ellerby Creek for no reason except the financial benefit of one resident. There's no, they're not offering anything to the community, nothing to the residents that already live here. They're not talking about sidewalks. They're not talking about, you know, a park for the kids. They're not talking about any of that. It's purely eighty-one units connected to the sewer. There's no reason to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan Martin. I believe you're muted.
Hi, committee members, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hello, uh, my name is Jonathan Martin. I live at eleven thirty-three Thompson Road. Uh, I've been a resident of the Hamlin Road community area for the last twenty-nine years. And in that time, I've seen our community grow, adapt, and evolve in many different ways. I'm not opposed to change when it's thoughtful, responsible, and truly benefits the people and the environment that we share with this place. With that being said, I, I want to voice some concerns I had with the decision to annex the Hamlin Reserve, uh, community to the city. The urban growth boundary were put in place for a reason, to balance development with our preservation, to not sprawl, but to ensure the infrastructure and resources are kept pace with growth. When we move those lines for the sake of one project, we risk undermining decades of careful planning. of careful planning. Boundaries are not just lines on the map. They are safeguards against overgrowth that can overwhelm our roads, schools, and public services. Annexing this land would also cause us to bring serious environmental consequences. The area is home to wildlife whose habitats have already began to shrink. Increased development here would further disrupt their environment, leaving less space for animals that have always been part of our county's natural heritage. The Hamlin Reserve area is also part of the Falls and Jordan District A, uh, which is a critical watershed that provides clean water for residents and support decades of ecosystems. The more we pave over those areas and build upon the land, the greater risk that water pool will be on the health of the river. And beyond those environmental impacts, there are safety and quality of life concerns. Development would inevitably increase traffic on the roads that currently lack sidewalks or bike lanes, creating real danger for children walking to school, cyclists, and pedestrians. As someone who values safe and connected neighborhoods, I'm concerned that the proposal prioritizes new housing over essential safety infrastructure.
Thank you.
Uh, growth is, okay, thank you.
You're out of time. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next speaker is Katie Ross. Please unmute yourself. You should be able to talk now.
Hello, hello.
We can hear you. Go ahead. Ms. Ross? Let's move on to Donna Stenbeck. Come back to Ms. Ross.
Hello?
We can hear you.
I'm Donna Stenbeck. I live at forty-eight twenty-five Jimmy Rogers Road in Durham, North Carolina. And I, um, I do not support this project. I support the current UGB. We work very, I think, hard as a team to define that. And this project is not a good example of why to extend it. Um, I support the input of several of the votes, um, that have spoke tonight about not extending the UGB. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Katie Ross ready to go?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I, I have a new computer, so I'm getting used to the different inputs. So, people have made really great points here about why we need to honor the urban uh, growth boundary. I would like to say that I sat through many, many hearings, uh, regarding the comprehensive plan adoption and the setting of the urban growth boundary. The elected, both county and city, heard all of these arguments and so did the planning department. That these applicants, along with others in their similar situation, testified, they gave their reasons, those were considered, along with what all of the rest of the people living, especially out in the county, but all over Durham, uh, said. And the final decision was to set the urban growth boundary where it is. This is not the first opportunity that these applicants or anyone else in their position has had to state their case. They stated it and the urban growth boundary remained where, where it is. To allow these incursions outside of the urban growth boundary for the benefit of one, one or two families is a betrayal to all of the rest of the, uh, people in the county that depended on our elected officials and the planning department to set this boundary. And I ask you to please hold the boundary. And also I wanted to say if, to the planning commission, I have noticed many of your comments going through the city council. A lot of times, uh, there'll be a yes vote, but then all of this, you know, uh, re- reservations. Let me just tell you that the elected voting, they only see the yes or the no. If you vote yes on something, but you really want a lot of other things to be done, it, it's not happening.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Ken Pugh.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I am Ken Pugh, resident of Durham County. Address on file. This request is not consistent with Durham's adopted growth strategy and should be denied. On Monday, February third, twenty twenty-five, the Durham City Council heard the first case in which annexation outside the UGB had been proposed since the adoption of the comprehensive plan in October twenty-three. The council unanimously denied the annexation of Mariah Ridge Parcels. In that hearing, residents cited the very same policy conflicts that are, uh, with, before you tonight. And the mayor and every city council member agreed to keep the UGB in place to preserve the integrity of the comprehensive plan. This proposal conflicts with the clear direction set by city council just months ago. It also violates the criteria for an expansion of the UGB as stated in the comprehensive plan. It extends the UGB into a critical watershed, the Falls of the Noose and Jordan Lake Critical Area. Second, there is no community need for this expansion. As the city council and residents have clearly understated, have stated, keep the urban growth boundary where it is. Deny this proposal, uphold the comprehensive plan, and protect Durham's long-term vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that has not used the raise your hand feature or if you are on the phone and you need to dial star nine to be able to, uh, call in and speak? I don't see anyone else on the Zoom and everyone in the audience in person has spoken, so I'm going to, uh, allow the applicant to come back up. I believe they had five minutes and ten, twenty-one seconds or something like that left to address any community concerns that they heard.
Good evening. Mike Roselli with Underfoot Engineering. Uh, I wanted to make sure I was making myself available to answer any questions you may all have. We heard a lot of unsubstantiated comments regarding traffic, safety, and the environment. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, uh, and I'm licensed because I hold paramount the health, welfare, and safety of the public, and I do that every day. In multiple meetings in coordination with the city of Durham and with NCDOT, there has not been one concern with safety, with traffic, or the environment, and a traffic impact analysis is not even required for this project. The applicant has even obtained a city summary utility and development statement with the city saying exactly what we need to do, um, to provide utilities to the site. There's a water line on the frontage and the sewer's down the street. This is a very clear-cut case of an annexation to utilize the utilities that are available to the best that they can be utilized, um, because taxpayer dollars are, are maintaining those facilities. And, and this is right here. This is a, this is a slam dunk, um, to add very much needed housing in the city of Durham. So I'm here to answer any other questions you may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, did you have anything you wanted to address? No? All right. Um, we have one more Zoom person. I'll allow it, Nicole Owens, and then we're closing the public hearing. Go ahead.
Again, good evening. Uh, this is Nicole Owens and I live on Hamlin Road. Unsubstantiated claims of traffic, that's an insane statement. Anyone who lives on Hamlin Road can tell you about the increase in traffic and the increase of speeding on Hamlin since Carver has been opened. Anyone who lives on Hamlin can definitely substantiate the increase in traffic and all of the other traffic concerns that we have. And as a development that is not providing, I don't know, sidewalks or anything of that sort to the community or any other benefit, to substantiate changing the boundary for eighty-one houses in the middle of a watershed in between the Ino River and Ellerby Creek? That is just absolutely unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, um, the chair is closing the public hearing. We are now open for commissioner discussion and questions. Are there any questions? The applicant? Uh, Commissioner Newkirchen?
I have a question regarding the access to water. You said, uh, the city provides water to the site, but it does not provide septic. So does the city charge for their supply of water? Or do they not because they don't have the septic? That's the question.
Uh, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and then answer the question.
I'm Ricky Gates, uh, owner of the property you're talking about. So what was your question, Ms.?
My question is, do you pay for the water that the city provides to you?
So I own about seventeen hundred foot of road furniture. And when I purchased the land, uh, the road furniture is paid for by the prior owners. And we have a house there and yes, we pay water to the, to the city. So we have a water bill.
Any other questions? Commissioner Copac?
Thank you, Chair Cameron. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points I had questions about. Uh, so first, uh, I feel like I've heard messages about the conservation subdivision allowing for the introduction of mixed-use housing types into the subdivision, and I feel like staff referenced it, but I also feel like I saw comments in the application and the applicant state that it would be a single-family development, and I just wanted to clarify that point first of all.
Sure. So, um, conservation subdivisions allow single-family and townhouses to be built, but it does not require either or. Um, the, under a conservation subdivision, if the applicant chose to do all single-family, they could certainly do so.
All right, that clarifies that question. Thank you. Unless the applicant wants to...
I was just going to add, that's the intent of the annexation is to subdivide for single-family detached homes only. There are no townhomes that are planned to, to be developed here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I saw kind of debate in the community comments from some of the meetings about the statement, um, I think by the applicant, that if this doesn't go through, that the, that the current property can be developed, um, by right for forty single-family homes. And so my question is, is that right? Or would it also require an annexation in order to be able to go forward with that?
So under the RR zoning at a one-acre minimum lot size, they could subdivide theoretically into forty lots, uh, to develop those. Whether they could get forty lots would depend on how well the land perks and whether or not they can get septic permits, and we simply don't have that information at this time.
I, I could add some color to that, um, discussion that we had at our neighborhood meetings. It was, it was truly to compare the two development styles, whether this property is annexed, in which case that would allow for a more compact development and allow for significantly more, uh, open space preservation and tree conservation. If the site is developed, uh, under county zoning and under county regulations, the size of the lots would have to significantly increase in order for each lot to be able to, uh, you know, hold its own septic tank. So the ability to access utilities creates a more compact development than what could otherwise be developed under its current county jurisdiction.
Thank you. Good, all right. Any other questions, comments? Are we ready to move this case forward? If so, may I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case number Z two four triple zero four six A dash BDG two four triple zero two zero Hamlin Reserve, I move that we send this case forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Copac and seconded by Commissioner Williams to move case Z twenty-four triple zero forty-six A dash BDG twenty-four triple zero twenty Hamlin Reserve forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron?
No.
Vice Chair Shigeris?
No.
Commissioner Bailey?
No.
Commissioner Capers?
No.
Commissioner Chakowski?
No.
Commissioner Copac?
No.
Commissioner Neinkirchner?
No.
Commissioner Piantak?
No.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Woke?
No.
The motion fails eleven zero.
Thank you. We are moving on to public hearings, zoning map changes. The first case is Z twenty-four triple zero ten Heartland Park Subdivision. May we have the staff report, please? We need a pause? Or we're good, we're good to go?
Good evening, Chair Cameron, members of the commission. Aaron Kane with the planning department. This case is Z twenty-four zero 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 one zero, Heartland Park Subdivision. This case is located at ten twenty-one, eleven oh five, and twelve thirteen Doc Nichols Road. The request is to change the zoning designation for twelve point nine 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 acres from residential rural to planned development residential nine point zero zero one. The existing place type is apartment and townhouse neighborhood, and the proposal is for up to one hundred and seventeen townhouse dwelling units. There it goes. Uh, the zoning in this area is primarily, and the uses in this area are primarily residential, and the proposed zoning would add to that additional residential density. The aerial shows that this is in an area of addition, of recent residential development. There is a recently approved development to the east as well as single-family dwellings that have been recently developed to the west on the other side of Doc Nichols Road. The place type map designation for this site is apartment and townhouse neighborhood. It is adjacent to a mixed residential neighborhood area and additional apartment and townhouse, uh, neighborhoods to the north. The applicant has included several commitments to their zoning application, including, uh, post-development runoff to not exceed the one-hundred-year storm event, a ten-foot shared use path along Doc Nichols Road, uh, five percent of the units to meet Durham affordability standards, a donation to Durham Public Schools, and all required plantings to be of nation, native species. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with neighborhood meeting guidelines on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and July ninth, twenty twenty-five. No comments have been received to date on the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is consistent with the place type map designation of apartment and townhouse neighborhood and is also consistent with fifteen of twenty-two Durham comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. I do need the sign-in sheet, the signup sheet. I'll trade you. Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come forward?
Good evening, Chair Cameron and Vice Chair Shigeris, members of the planning commission. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at seven hundred West Main Street here in Durham. I'm representing the applicant for this project, and I want to thank Mr. Kane, uh, for his presentation. At base, I think what's most important to understand is that this is a small project. I know one-hundred-and-seventeen townhomes probably doesn't sound small, but it is on thirteen acres. So this is really approaching the densification within the urban growth boundary that the comp plan envisions. That having been said, this story here actually starts about June of twenty-twenty-three. Initially, my client here envisioned, I think it was seventy-eight single-family homes on this acreage, with the notion that they were aiming for a lower price point on for-sale units in kind of what I would describe as a no-frill subdivision. We actually submitted that project in February last year. They had a specific product type in mind, but as we worked through the process, it became evident that it wasn't going to be possible. Mostly, this came down to design issues that we found as we, you know, went through the review process, that we were going to have trouble meeting setbacks, link node ratios, things like that. Moreover, a single-family community on this land would be inconsistent with the place type map. So, you know, in short, I would say there were too many challenges that needed to be overcome in order for that vision to pan out. So at some point, we switched from a single-family project to a townhome project, well, the one that's in front of you tonight. Townhome project is consistent with the place type map. It also will result in more housing units, as it is a denser product type, and perhaps, most importantly, we believe it's actually one that, at least from an initial design takeoff, can be built per the code. And not just the code, but we are exceeding the code in certain instances. For example, we have committed to handling the hundred-year storm on this project. We also will be using native plant species, and we have a ten-foot wide shared path across or along Doc Nichols. Additionally, per the recommendation from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we've included a commitment to keep the sidewalk flush across the driveway at Doc Nichols, which will result in a better pedestrian experience. I will say that specific design element will be subject to approval by NC DOT or the city, so as long as they will allow it, we will build it. We have, we've made the commitment. And we also have committed to providing five percent of the homes as affordable units for a period of thirty years. Now, I'm not going to tell you that this is the best project you've ever seen, but this is a good project, and it is sensible. It addresses the need for housing, and it does so in a responsible way relative to a small piece of land. What we're proposing here is PDR nine. I think what's interesting is that the zoning around us is at PDR five-point-five, two-point-nine. There is a seven-point-two, which is pretty good, but also a few in the twos and threes. The reality is that those lower densities simply are not going to help the city take advantage, or help the city keep up with the growing housing demand. And I think the city has a responsibility to take advantage of the parcels where it actually is possible to build at these higher levels of density, and this project does just that. So I want to thank you all for your time and consideration tonight, and our team is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So we have Tammy, Tom, are y'all going to have your presentation?
You ready?
It's not showing, the presentation. There it is.
Control L.
So, just, I won't call on y'all when your two minutes is up, just next person, go up and say your name.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Wanda Allen. My address is on record. I want you to look at this slide here. We have eleven developments on this one-point-eight-mile road. All the developments on this road has been considered high-density and minimum, minimum UDO requirements. All the property that you see on here with the yellow triangles on this one-point-eight-mile road is townhouses. And you can see, we have been blessed with townhouses along this road. The site proposed that is coming through today is minimum buffers, minimum tree preservation, minimum stormwater design, and the maximum allow of seventy percent impervious. We're asking this developer to do better than the minimum. We want them to maintain and to enhance the water, stormwater management, to commit to de-watering from the temporary construction retention ponds, and construct erosion-controlled basins at at least a hundred-foot, a hundred-year stormwater. Commit to undisturbed buffers for the streams, wetlands, and boundary. Two, commit to oh-point-eight capacity. Commit to less than fifty percent impervious, and commit to bi-tension protection and no masquerading. Commit to pedestrian, single, you know how you have single, don't walk? We want that at this location. And commit to constructing the complete gap along the highway ninety-eight. Commit to no blasting. Commit to no blasting. Slide two. You can see, this is high-density on this road. Does not meet the UDO now or the proposed. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Freeman, and my address is on file. This, we want to ask the developer to commit to sample de-watering water from construction basis for quality, for water quality. Long-term turbidity runoff and resulting sediment pollution produce scoopable material ultimately kills an entire aquatic ecosystem. Developers should not go beyond the minimum standards when eyes can clearly see the devastation that results from those minimum standards. Additionally, there are usually approved developments with high-density, high impervious surface percents, increased runoffs, flooding, heat island effects, and car-dependent sprawl. That is the usual norm along this area. Southeast Durham is in a crisis. We want our developer to commit to no blasting, commitment of one-hundred-year stormwater retention ponds for construction, and commitment of less than fifty percent impervious, thirty percent, less than, more, we want thirty percent tree preservation and point-eight opacity for boundary buffers. Provide innovative storm management practices to preserve, to enhance water quality, and reduce runoff quantity.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Freeman. I live at eighteen-eighteenth Southview Road, Durham, North Carolina. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham. The degradation of Lit Creek has already been covered in the previous slide. I would point out to you that this is a view of Lit Creek looking upstream, thank you, at NC ninety-eight, at the Wake Forest Highway. Please, I invite you at your leisure to travel NC ninety-eight, look upstream or downstream, it'll look the same. Talking about the way things look, things never change out in my home. This is a view of Lit Creek from the twelfth. We've seen a lot of changes. We've seen control measures, gone from single celtation fences to double celtation fences, flocculants. Nothing changes. This is what we live with. This is what our environment lives with. I'd like to point out a particular word I'd like you to focus on, scoopable. Scoopable. Make a mental note of that. This is the sediment pollution that you see in Lit Creek. And what you see dispersed throughout the site is the cumulative impacts, another important word, the cumulative impacts of all of the development, the masqueraded, high-density development that has followed. This is what we have. In conclusion, I'll talk to you just briefly about the Kemp Road Bridge, which used to run free and clear, pretty clean water, full of aquatic life. This is what we're left with now. This is a somewhat new development, and this is about three miles from the NC ninety-eight bridge crossing at Lit Creek. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Williams. I live right at the end of Doc Nichols, have been there thirty-seven years. I saw Doc Nichols turn from a dirt road to a paved road. I was very happy about that because my daughter lives at the other end of Doc Nichols. This proposed plan continues to a pattern of development of ignoring established plans and policies designed to help Durham grow sustainably and efficiently. Anything more is violating core planning principles and annihilates a framework that protects Durham's neighborhoods. More housing and more affordability require thoughtful, long-term planning and focus on building what has already been zoned. Simply approved and more rezoning, especially one that doesn't meet or exceeds all of Doc 's plans and policies, will not solve affordability. Although the precedent has been set, doesn't mean we cannot undo approving all of these or rezoning all these high-density homes in this area. We ask that you act now to protect Durham's planned values for the environment and the community. This annexation and rezoning request does not serve the public's interest as it increases green space and access to public resources since it is car-centric and no public park. Only the interest of a single developer. The townhouses at Ovation, which is a donation to this property, is only three-point-seven PDR. This one is proposed nine-point-one. Nine-point-one is over four times more dwellings than zoned already, with minimum environmental policies met and producing four times more impact on the infrastructure and environment than what is now. The traffic on Doc Nichols increased a hundred-and-eighteen percent in two years, that's twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three. What is it going to increase with all this development that you see and have seen in this area? There is thirty-two sites that's under construction just in Lit Creek right now that is not added to the traffic that you see out there, and it's already congested.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Pam Andrews, sixty-one-oh-eight Wake Forest Highway. Our first responders are in a crisis. First responders, first thing I want to say is, in a fire response, time is our enemy. The latest audit conducted in October twenty-twenty-two addressed the need to meet the response time standards, which was one of the two recommendations made and challenged with our fire department. Next. The fire station was promised to us beginning November twenty-twenty-three, a new one. The Comprehensive Plan Policy one-twenty-two also identified Southeast Durham as a site needing a new fire service, yet we still keep building. Notice on this emergency, there was a three-story townhome. Durham fire departments had two ladder trucks, twenty-six firemen, remember that. Next. There are five stations around this city that have ladder trucks, only five. Where did the second ladder truck come from in that above example? It didn't come from Southeast Durham because we have one ladder truck in Southeast Durham, which impacts response times and people's lives. This is a fire schedule that we got from August seventh, this past weekend, from a firefighter. Notice five ladder trucks were, which were out there, needed for apartments, schools, and tall townhomes around this city. Look carefully at this fire assignment sheet. Almost every station only has three firefighters when they're supposed to have four recommended by the Fire Code seventeen-ten. Next. The fire emergency on July fifth, a mile from this proposed site that we're talking about tonight, fifty-two Durham firefighters, yes, fifty-two Durham firefighters had to attend to this fire, plus Raleigh Fire Department, Redwood Volunteer Fire Department, and Durham Highway. Fifty-two. Six came from Station Seventeen, three came from Station Eight. That's only nine firefighters. Where did the other ones come from? The rest of the county to put this out. We are in serious times out there, folks. Please help us get some infrastructure before we do more.
Thank you.
All right, Tammy Sowea on Baptist Road. I want to keep talking about the fire here, and I want to make another point. When she showed you all the schedules, we have five ladder trucks. We have three that are out of service, okay? So keep that in mind. And so here's another example of a family, two families at the same time, fifty-two fire people that had to respond here. It's beyond the fire. We have nine-one-one in crisis. In August, the Durham Director of Emergency Services says that we haven't added more EMS. You're going to need this. Here's an example of EMS in crisis just recently. Durham EMS units, Wake has called for assistance, but maybe they can't come. We have police that's in crisis. We know we have vacancy there. It's seven miles to this annexation. Medical, we know that there's going to be a children's hospital, but that's going to be in Apex and Wake County. Our population is growing. I did a ChatGPT today, three-hundred-sixty-seven thousand for Durham. I mean, we just don't have enough to cover the medical needs. Schools, I want to make sure you understand that in the zoning map, you know, they talk about the current capacity, but there's a cumulative capacity. You've got to add on what's been approved but not built. When you add that on, then you're overcapacity in all schools. Please keep that in mind. Our schools are overpopulated. We're in crisis in this area. And again, I want you to think about the fire. The fire in the emergency is what is the most passionate. It will impact every one of you. What if it's your family? What if it's your mom? What if your kid calling nine-one-one? My kid did have a seizure trying to get through to nine-one-one. Just think about it. Think about what we're adding on to Durham. We got to slow down. We don't have the infrastructure now. We don't need this. Thank you.
Next, we have Chris. Chris, I'm sorry, I can't read her last name. Youth Oven, excuse my...
Good evening. My name is Chris Youth Oven. I live at ten-ten Quiver Lane in Durham, North Carolina. My husband and I moved into our current home a year ago. We moved here from Leawood, Kansas. And I'll be very honest, if I had any idea the condition of the development in that area, we would have looked elsewhere. We probably would have moved into Raleigh. We were not put off by the developing that we saw coming. We were actually rather excited about it because we want to live in a vibrant community. We said to each other, surely they're going to address the infrastructure, right? We live on right off Doc Nichols Road, which is a one-point-eight-mile, two-way road with little to no shoulders, sidewalks that I say go to nowhere. There's a section of sidewalk that's been built probably by a developer, non-contiguous, doesn't connect to anything. It is an incredibly dangerous road for pedestrians or cyclists. I looked forward to the idea of getting a bike and being able to explore that area. I would take my life into my hands riding out of our community in Sagewood to get on to Doc Nichols. All of these individual projects have been approved. We've been participating via Zoom on city council meetings to hear what's going on in our community because I believe if we're going to live someplace, I want to know about the community we're a part of. And it disturbs me that, first of all, they're being approved one-offs and not understanding the cumulative effect. You've heard all about that in terms of how it's impacting fire and emergency services and our environment. So you're going to add another hundred-and-seven, hundred-and-seventeen, hundred-and-seventy townhomes. There are townhomes there right now. When we moved in, there's a development at the corner of Leesville and Doc Nichols. It's been there since we moved in, so a year, that's still empty. There's still nobody living in it. Please, think about that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donnie Nichols. I live at twenty-twenty-eight Joshua Lane, and I wrote mine, so. Good evening, Planning Commission commissioners, Planning Commission members. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for the chance to make my voice as a resident known, heard here. Thank you for the public hearing notice that I received in a timely manner, truly, because, for instance, apparently there was an announcement set out for a meeting on July eighth. We did not get that. Also, my experience with other communications about any rezoning in this area have been within a few days of the meeting or after they've occurred. So, we moved to Sagewood right- So we moved to Sagewood right off Doc Nichols Road, across the street from this development, about four years ago, precisely because it was such a beautiful area, including the family farm that would be rezoned by this 117 townhouses. And we believe that others who would want to move here should enjoy a similar experience. We had no indication that the coming high-density rezoning would be without increased infrastructure. As they said, they would not have moved here if they had known another neighbor here with us. Her yard has serious drainage issues. It's been regraded four times and still won't drain because of runoff from Doc Nichols Road, again, directly across from this new development. Her next-door neighbor has a permanent ditch in his yard because of the same, and that will only increase with, again, this development. If there's even more blasting in the area, what will you consider as alternatives because of cumulative damage? Cumulative. What is the cumulative impact of traffic on Doc Nichols Road from the existing and planned developments? You've already heard how many there are. Doc Nichols is rated at a capacity of 13,600 vehicles per day, yet the expected more than 600% increase in traffic, 850 vehicles per day just from this Hartland Park alone, plus any cut-throughs and things like that would exceed that. So it's not this individual. It is the cumulative we are asking you to please consider. The new traffic light there is an offering, but not a solution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak that did not sign up? Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak? Please use the raise your hand feature. All right, seeing none with the applicant, sorry, Donna Stanback.
Hello. I'm Donna Stanback at 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road in Durham, North Carolina. I nearly hit a deer crossing between developments on Doc Nichols, fairly recently. But while I still remain, has little space to go now. I have been to the pasture. This development will take more trees and more grass away and trade it for pavement and buildings that we may not even need desperately for the housing. Even with the small acreage, the project's dense dwelling, it will leave a large footprint in the environment. On another note, will the townhomes have garages and bedrooms on the first floor? Now, over 50% of the homeowners are over 56. And how, and, you know, I have a special interest in the disabled, you know, will they have special allocations? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak? Please use the raise your hand feature. Would the applicant like to come up and address any community concerns?
Sure, thank you. Just want to touch on a couple of things. I think it was mentioned that, you know, some of the neighbors wanted us to do more than what is required in the UDO for stormwater management. We are. We've committed to doing the 100-year on the site. But one thing that came up, they mentioned that they would also like to see the 100-year being designed for in the temporary control measures. And technically, the way that we have written our condition, it only applies to the permanent measures. So we would be willing to adjust that language so that it's clear that it would apply to both the temporary and the permanent measures, that they would be designed for the 100-year.
Thank you. We can take that. We would want to run that by our Stormwater Division to make sure it's do exactly the wording that would be used, but that's certainly something we can look at.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request, and I think that it's something we can accommodate on this site. So we'll be happy to make that commitment. There was a lot of compelling information that was given here about maybe the lack of infrastructure in the city. And, you know, I would, I just would want to make the point that there isn't a single developer that's really in charge of hiring police or fire or anything like that. This project does add to infrastructure. We are adding segments of sidewalk, segments of bike lane. We are adding road improvements. One of the speakers mentioned that in this area, there are sidewalks that go to nowhere, probably built by developers. Yeah, that's correct. That's how infrastructure gets built in this area. The city does not often take, you know, take on a project to build sidewalk down an existing street. Instead, that happens piecemeal by developers, and that's exactly what this project continues to do. So I think it's fair, it's a fair statement to say that there are sidewalks in this area that go to nowhere. The alternative is there could be no sidewalks at all if there were no development at all. And maybe that's what some folks want, but this project does add to the infrastructure, and it adds its fair share. Actually, I think that's really all I'm going to touch on at this point. And our team is available to answer any questions that you may have. I appreciate your consideration of this request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is closed. We are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner.
I have a question about your max unit is 117. What is your minimum? I mean, what is the minimum that you would say, all right, if I don't get this minimum, I'm going to scrap this project?
Well, actually, there's a specific requirement. So we've requested a PDR zoning, PDR 9.001, with a maximum of 117 units. Under the UDO, we would be required at a minimum to hit that 117 number within 80%. I can't do that math in my head, but that's the number?
It's 94 units.
94.
That would be the minimum they could build.
At minimum would be required. Yeah. So, but I think your question, so that's the legal answer, what's the minimum number of units? I think your question was more so for the developer, what is the minimum number of units taken in? So we've taken a look at that. One of the things that we looked at was tree save. So we're at the, we're at the, we're at the UDO-required amount of tree save, and we looked at our ability to add more tree save. So one of the best things about this site is that it's actually free of environmental features. So there's no wetlands, there's no riparian buffer, there's no steep slopes, nothing like that. And so what that means is that, you know, additional features like additional tree save would come out of otherwise developed land. And the issue with that is that on this small site, we've planned it quite densely, so literally 1% more tree save, which is about 5,200 square feet, because of the dimensional requirements for tree save, that would end up, you know, you'd be losing three to five units that way. And that is something that the developer felt like they really couldn't stomach on this. And that's, those are, 5,200 square feet is 1% more tree save, right? The lot loss is kind of a theoretical based off the shape of, shape, dimensional requirements for tree save. And, but all of this is coming before we actually get to the site plan stage. As long as I've been doing this, I've never worked on a project where you didn't lose some units at the site plan stage because that's just what happens. You hadn't planned for this slope or that, you know. So there, you know, if we committed to additional tree save, like 1% more, it would be five units off the table in addition to whatever we were going to lose off the table from the site plan stage. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Could the percentage of affordable housing be increased from that 5% that you currently have it at?
Well, it's something that I could talk to my clients about. I don't know that we're prepared to make that commitment tonight, but I understand and recognize that that's, your request is for us to look at that, and that's something I can commit to doing that. And I, you know, I think they're pretty motivated to get the project approved. You know, this is, this is a pretty good project, and, you know, as I mentioned the story earlier, they had a different project in mind. So they've had to kind of shift gears, and they've been at it for a while on this. So, you know, I think that to the extent we're able, you know, I'll ask them to take a good, hard look at that to see if we can increase that.
I'm just curious about the flexibility.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Commissioner Salkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Is the applicant willing to make any additional commitments to address the community concerns raised this evening?
Well, I think we just did with, in improving that stormwater commitment to include the temporary control measures, which, you know, I think is, like I said, that's a fair point that they brought up. The way we wrote the commitment, I think the spirit is there, but it only applied to the permanent measure, which is something that I think, in particular, some of these speakers, who I'm familiar with, have, you know, asked that type of commitment before. And I think they made a fair statement pointing out that that commitment really only applies to the permanent stormwater device, which is correct, and that really, you know, they would like, their concern extends to also the temporary measure. We're going to make that. We're going to do that on this site.
Are there any additional beyond that?
Do you have any in mind? I mean, I don't, I.
Yeah, I think there were some really valid concerns raised about response times. I recognize that as the developer, there are limited things that you are able to do, but, you know, this is, you've shown great creativity, and I wonder if there are things that can be done to alleviate those concerns?
Well, so it is correct that the comprehensive plan has called out an area in eastern Durham County for additional fire safety coverage. But this is not in that area. Now, that doesn't discount, you know, maybe some of the hiring shortages that are there. I can tell you that I'm working on projects that are in that area where we are trying to find ways to get that fire station onboard. But that didn't come up in the staff review of this because this is outside of that, that specific area where that need is called out. So it's not really something we looked at. Like, you know, on some of those other projects, they're much larger and they're further out, and that's why there's a fire coverage need. And what we're talking about is trying to find a site for a fire station. On a 13-acre site, I mean, that's the project. You know, we can't really accommodate a fire station or something like that on this site. Thank you.
Vice Chair Chigares.
Yeah, this might be for the applicant. It might be for city staff concerning the, one of the comments on the B-PAC, connectivity to the neighbor, the adjacent developments. And it says there's a gap to the one south of the property, and then the staff says connection to the east and the planned roadway to that development will be required at the site plan. Which, which exactly, which connection is that?
You can see it on the parcel map. There's a new subdivision that's going into our east that has a road stub to our property line. We will absolutely connect to that. That same subdivision, there is a road that kind of comes south of our property. That's the one we can't connect to because we don't actually touch that right of way. There's a gap between our southern property line.
About that's in the middle of your project is the one you will connect to.
On our east side?
Yes. And they'll be required to per the UDO.
Yep. Which is why I assume the B-PAC comment was referring to the connection to the south. It's not one we can make.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Forgive my construction ignorance here, but can you tell me what a commitment to no blasting would look like?
Well, it's not a commitment we're ready to make, and the reason we're not ready to make it is because we haven't done any subsurface evaluation. Blasting is, for any developer I've worked with, a last-ditch effort, right? So it's very costly and risky, frankly. So, you know, generally, what you hope is that you don't hit rock at all. If you do hit rock, you try to rip it first. If you can't rip it, you may try to jackhammer it, depending on what, the amount of rock. And if that doesn't work, then you blast. We don't have any subsurface evaluation to really understand if there is a likelihood that we'll hit rock. There, there has been blasting in other developments in this area, right? So there's no, there's no question that there, we could hit rock, but without doing any kind of subsurface evaluation, which generally isn't done until later, we wouldn't even know if there's a likelihood for these 13 acres that we would hit rock, which is why we're reluctant to make that type of commitment. Blasting is, if you made a commitment to not blast and then you hit rock that can't be ripped, that can't be jackhammered out, well, then what do you do with the rock?
Is there a community-centric sort of conversation that you've seen around blasting where you've been able to incorporate community voices into a blasting process so that it's more responsive to community concerns, less dangerous for community members?
I would say, I don't, I don't have a lot of personal experience in how the blasting process works. The way it's supposed to work is that people within a certain area are supposed to get notification. They're supposed to get the opportunity for a pre-blast inspection. They're supposed to get the opportunity for a post-blast inspection. Whether those things happen, I can't tell you, right? But that's how, that's how the process is set up. That's what's supposed to happen.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Copan.
Thank you, Chair Cameron. So thank you for the additional commitment around stormwater. I did hear a request also around retention pond.
That's the temporary.
So that's the temporary one that you addressed.
So our current commitment that's written in the agenda packet addresses the permanent stormwater control measure. The temporary would be called the sedimentation erosion control measure or retention pond for that, right? So we, what we had discussed earlier was we've already committed to doing the 100-year storm permanent, right? So we're going to adjust the language so that that addresses also the temporary SNEC measures. The, well, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, that's what I heard. Thanks for the help with the lexicon. So when it comes to impervious surface, you know, there's already runoff issues folks are facing. You know, you've talked about the difficulty with tree save with what you're trying to put on this site, but talk to me a bit about impervious surface and if there are opportunities there to, to do better than just being at the maximum.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any way for me to put it, this site, this zoning, this site does not have environmental features, which allows us to develop a lot more densely than maybe some other sites. The fact that there aren't environmental features on the site is kind of an anomaly. I think you guys have seen plenty of developments in eastern Durham. Generally, they're going to have steep slopes, wetlands, or streams on it. This has none of those things. So there's no two ways about it. We've designed it at the 70% level with the increased stormwater measures to handle those things. We're not really in a position to decrease the impervious because that's going to, that will change the number of units right there. It's, in other words, we're talking about a max buildout of this site, which might not be the case for other projects that you hear, but this one is, it's PDR 9. It's the densest one that you've seen in this area, which, in my opinion, is a good thing. If we can move density in that direction, that'll help address the housing needs in city Durham.
I'm hoping that staff or my colleagues can help me when it comes to school commitments and what expectations are or the standard has been around contributions to Durham Public Schools.
So we do not have a standard. All donations to Durham Public Schools are voluntary from the applicant, and we cannot require them. Generally, we see about $500 to $1,000 per projected net student as a donation when those donations are made.
And for what it's worth, the staff report suggests that there will be six additional students, and the commitment here was $6,000 to DPS. The number in the staff report related to the cost per student is one that I've seen referenced by the Planning Commission recently, the 5,374 per pupil estimated annual operating costs. It's important to understand that that cost comes from the tax base from the project. So the $6,000 is in addition to those costs. This doesn't suggest that the project doesn't cover the cost of students. It's just telling you what the number is, but that number is coming from.
I was trying to get at the voluntary commitment level.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to thank and elevate the community concerns. You know, we are seeing significant cumulative impact, and that's always a difficult thing to weigh in these cases where we see the overarching pressure that's happening and have to weigh that against the individual cases that come before. But yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Are you ready to move this case forward?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to close the, yeah, the public hearing. All right, are you ready to move this case forward? May I have a motion? to move this case forward? I lost myself. May I have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to move this case forward with a favorable recommendation. Case number Z2400010, Heartland Park subdivision, forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeras to move case Z240010, Heartland Park subdivision, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeras?
No.
Commissioner Bailey?
No.
Commissioner Capers?
No.
Commissioner Chakowski?
No.
Commissioner Kopeck?
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner?
No.
Commissioner Pontek?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Woke?
No.
The motion fails seven to four.
All right. Thank you. Next case, we have Z240036, 1607 East Corn, no, let's take a break, right?
That's what I was about to say. Now would be a good time to do that.
Until 7:35. Let's come back at 7:35. The AC is there.
You've got to do what you do here. You've got to sit here and listen to- Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting back to order. We have case Z240036, 1607 East Cornwallis Road. May we have the staff report, please?
Hello. Good evening again, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeras, and Planning Commissioners. I am back up tonight to present Z240036, 1607 East Cornwallis Road. The request is to rezone 22.54 acres located along East Cornwallis Road from commercial neighborhood with a graphic development plan to commercial neighborhood with a textual development plan and would allow for most uses within the CN district. The current zoning is commercial neighborhood with a graphic development plan that allows up to 12,800 square feet of banking facility, sundry store, laundromat, dry cleaning pickup station, real estate, rental office, barber shop, beauty shop, and/or gift shop. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial neighborhood with a textual development plan to allow for any use within the district except for educational facilities, medical facilities, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, drive-through facilities, convenience store with gasoline sales, payday lenders, and vehicle service. The site is immediately surrounded by Plan Development Residential, Residential Suburban M, and Residential Suburban 20 zoning districts. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The site is located on the southeastern side of East Cornwallis Road and Century Oaks Drive. The site is immediately surrounded by the Amber Oaks, Emery Wood, and Triangle Place apartment communities. The property is currently designated Neighborhood Services on the placetime map and is generally consistent with this designation as it allows for a range of commercial, residential, and civic uses. The applicant has proffered actual commitments, including use limitations, limiting potential non-residential square footage to a maximum of 12,000 square feet, native species for all required plantings, a $2,000 contribution to Durham Public Schools, and a 70% maximum impervious surface area. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on October 24, 2024, and June 24, 2025. Each meeting had five and three attendees respectively. No comments have been received by staff in relation to this case in the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is consistent with 11 of 16 applicable comprehensive plan policies and is generally consistent with the Neighborhood Services placetime map designation. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May the applicant
Good evening once again, and thank you, Peyton, for your presentation. I'm Neil Gosh, an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group, 700 West Main Street, and I'm representing the applicant on this project. So during my career, I've come across a few parcels where the zoning was so restrictive, it makes you question the logic. In fact, the first rezoning I worked on as an attorney was in Wake Forest. The parcel was zoned with a single zoning condition that said the site could be used for a plumbing supply store. That's it. Locally, there was one, the old Rite Aid near 751, had a very similar zoning condition until we rezoned it, and that condition-based excited it could only be used for a Rite Aid. And that's kind of the story here, right? So under the current zoning, the property can be used for only a handful of uses.
Hello. Good evening again, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeras and Planning Commissioners. I am back up tonight to present Z 24 000 36 1607 East Cornwallis Road. The request is to rezone 22.54 acres located along East Cornwallis Road from commercial neighborhood with a graphic development plan to commercial neighborhood with a textual development plan and would allow for most uses within the CN district. The current zoning is commercial neighborhood with a graphic development plan that allows up to 12,800 square feet of banking facility, sundry store, laundromat, dry cleaning pickup station, real estate rental office, barber shop, beauty shop and/or gift shop. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial neighborhood with a textual development plan to allow for any use within the district except for educational facilities, medical facilities, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, drive-through facilities, convenience store with gasoline sales, payday lenders and vehicle service. The site is immediately surrounded by Plan Development Residential, Residential Suburban M and Residential Suburban 20 zoning districts. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. The site is located on the southeastern side of East Cornwallis Road and Century Oaks Drive. The site is immediately surrounded by the Amber Oaks, Emery Wood and Triangle Place apartment communities. The property is currently designated Neighborhood Services on the placetype map and is generally consistent with this designation as it allows for a range of commercial, residential and civic uses. The applicant has proffered textual commitments including use limitations, limiting potential non-residential square footage to a maximum of 12,000 square feet, native species for all required plantings, a $2,000 contribution to Durham Public Schools and a 70% maximum impervious surface area. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on October 24, 2024 and June 24, 2025. Each meeting had five and three attendees respectively. No comments have been received by staff in relation to this case in the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is consistent with 11 of 16 applicable comprehensive plan policies and is generally consistent with the Neighborhood Services placetype map designation. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May the applicant please come forward.
Good evening once again, and thank you Peyton for your presentation. I'm Neil Gosh, an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group, 700 West Main Street, and I'm representing the applicant on this project. So during my career, I've come across a few parcels where the zoning was so restrictive, it makes you question the logic. In fact, the first rezoning I worked on as an attorney was in Wake Forest. The parcel was zoned with a single zoning condition that said the site could be used for a plumbing supply store. That's it. There locally, there was one, the old Rite Aid near 751 had a very similar zoning condition until we rezoned it, and that condition basically said it could only be used for a Rite Aid. And that's kind of the story here, right? So under the current zoning, the property can be used for only a handful of uses. And I just have to read this list of uses to you because it's just one of my favorites. The property can be used for banking, a sundry store, laundromat, dry cleaning, real estate office, barber shop, beauty shop or gift shop, and that's it. Nothing wrong with any of those uses, but the property's been zoned that way since 1981, and the property has been vacant since 1981. So clearly, the market has decided that those uses are not viable at this location. We are proposing a to rezone the property basically to add more uses to the list of possibilities. The base zoning would remain the same, commercial neighborhood, but this time rather than restrict the use of the parcel to only a handful of uses, we're going to allow it to be used for anything in the CN district except for schools, medical facilities, indoor/outdoor recreation, drive-through facilities, gas station, payday lenders, vehicle service. What that leaves are things like residential, like single-family townhomes or even a group home for old folks. Community service would be allowed, daycare, potentially a place of worship, a restaurant would be allowed, but not with a drive-through. Small-scale retail would be allowed, like a sundry shop, or services like barber shop or nail salon or perhaps a small office, and that's really about it. We've also added some additional commitments that are not exactly related to use. We have limited non-residential square footage to 12,000 square feet. We'll be using native plantings where possible. We have limited the impervious area to no more than 70%. And we're also making a contribution to DPS, and that's regardless of whether the site is built for residential. Oh, and we added a commitment related to access because in our discussion with the city and NCDOT, it's pretty important to them. And I guess that condition basically says that we'll be adding southbound left turn lanes to the site where there's access points. And that's kind of all there is too. It's a strange rezoning for sure, but it's not terribly, you know, complex or complicated. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but basically we're just trying to open up the possibilities for this parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up. Do we have any? I already have it. There's no one else signed up? Anyone here that would like to speak that's not signed up? Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak? Speak, please. Use the raise your hand feature. Going once, going twice. Alrighty, the public hearing is now closed, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Vice Chair Shigeras.
Yes, what is the size of the site? Because the staff report says 1.91 acres on what we got, and then Peyton said something about like 12 acres? What? Which one's correct?
All right, you got me there. I'm not sure of the exact.
Vice Chair Shigeras, I think you might be referring to the 12,000 square foot limit on non-residential uses. Is that what you're referring to?
1.91 acres.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right. Cool.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kopac.
Yeah, a question for the applicant. There was some discussion about, you know, given the proximity to transit, which is also a benefit requests around like a parking pad or some investments there, but concerns about the space available. Do I have that right?
Yeah, sure. So.
Yeah, what are the limitations and, you know, is there something that you could do there to make that investment? Because we've seen other projects that have been able to make that sort of installation.
So there are there are bus stops, if I recall correctly, along Cornwallis both to the north and south of this site already. They're existing. We were asked to look at the possibility of committing to putting another bus stop in this location. And on other projects that I've worked on, we we have, you know, oftentimes made that commitment. Obviously, it would be subject to the desire for at time of site plan by Go Triangle or Go Durham, whoever's running the bus. But in this instance, the site is very small. A bus pad is going to impact the developable area on the site. So we didn't make the commitment because there's already the two bus stops. You can walk to them. They're right there. But they're, you know, if if Go Durham or Go Triangle wanted the bus pad here, it would be very detrimental to the developable area on the site. It's a small site, less than two acres. So that's why we didn't make the commitment.
Any additional questions? If not, if we're ready to move this case forward, may I have a motion, please?
All right, Chair, as it relates to Chair, as it relates to case Z 24 000 36 1607 East Cornwallis Road, I move that we send this case forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kopac and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeras to move case Z 24 000 36 1607 East Cornwallis Road forward with the favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeras.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopac.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
Yes.
Commissioner Piantak.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
Yes.
The motion passes 11 to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, zoning map changes, case number three, Z 24 000 38 Wake Olive. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. My turn again. This case is E 24 000 38 Wake Olive is located at 5247 and 5255 Wake Forest Highway. It is 12.16 acres, and the request is to change the zoning from Residential Rural and Residential Suburban 20 to Plan Development Residential 17.270. The existing placetype is mixed-use neighborhood, and the staff recommends no change based on this application. And the proposal is for up to 210 dwelling units with up to 10,000 square feet of non-residential uses. As stated earlier, the existing zoning is Residential Rural and Residential Suburban 20. The proposed zoning is PDR 17.270. The site is immediately surrounded by other RR and RS 20 zoning districts with some commercial center zoning to the south. The aerial map shows the general location for the project. It is located north of the terminus of Olive Branch Road at Wake Forest Highway. Immediately to the east is Neal Middle School. The site is generally surrounded by undeveloped and large lot residential to the north and west. Further west is the commercial node of Wake Forest Highway and Patterson Road/Sharon Road. To the south, in between Olive Branch Road and Hillview Drive, is the State Employees Credit Union. This property is currently designated mixed-use neighborhood on the placetype map. As noted, this proposal is considered consistent with that designation. The applicant has included several textual commitments to this project, including a $33,000 contribution to Durham Public Schools, 6% of the units to be income restricted, limiting trip generation to no more than 149 vehicle trips at peak hour, an additional height and stormwater standards. In addition, it would be 21% tree coverage and a limited impervious surface of 67.5%. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on November 14, 2024 and June 30, 2025. One comment has been received by the staff in relation to this on Durham rezoning explorer, and it is against the proposal. The proposal is consistent with the placetype map designation of mixed-use neighborhood as it allows for a mix of residential and commercial uses. The proposal is consistent with 24 of 27 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. I need a sign-up sheet. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May the applicant please come forward.
Good evening, Chair Cameron, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Toby Coleman with the Smith Anderson Law Firm. I live here in Durham at 2702 Stewart Drive. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Redeeming Development Group. With me tonight is David Blanton with Redeeming Development Group. As some background, this is actually a case that the Playing Commission heard about 18 months ago. And it went to council and count at that time, it was an apartment-only project, 217 apartments. And council denied the annexation and therefore the rezoning by a five-to-two vote. And at least two of the members said that their concern was is that it didn't meet the mixed-use neighborhood placetype because it didn't have any commercial uses in it. So we've we've endeavored to correct that. If I could throw up the, we have a couple of slides. As as Aaron mentioned, the I won't wait for this to come up. I'll just talk through it. But as Aaron mentioned, we've tried to make this sort of a new and improved zoning proposal. So, you know, what we've done is made sure that the is is we have a 6% affordable, that's 3% at 60% AMI and 3% at 80% AMI. We're addressing the traffic by by just capping the budget or the traffic allowance at 149 peak trips. We've reduced the residential density slightly from 217 down to 210. And then we've added a number of environmental protections. The northern about 200 feet of the property, about 12% of the property will be open space that you can't touch. We've also obviously committed to increased tree conservation and reduced impervious. We one of the other things I wanted to note, and we're happy to answer any questions, but one of the other things we wanted to note is that there was a comment that from the prior case that sort of carried over from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. Because this property is adjacent to Neal Middle School, Bike and Pedestrian Committee asked us to look at potentially creating a multi-use path connection to Neal Middle School. And again, if I could put this slide up, I would love to, but basically the, there we go. So what you can see there is the shared property line. The problem with that shared property line is it's in the back of Neal Middle School in the woods. And I don't know what you guys were like in middle school. I may be judging this based on what I was like in middle school, but I didn't, you know, I don't know that anybody really wants to give middle schoolers access to a path through the woods in the back of school. We and it wasn't just me that I went and I we've talked with Kristen Brookshire, who's with school, the Durham Public Schools facilities. And we talked through, how could we get a path that works? And we determined that a multi-use path from one property to the other off of the front edge didn't really make any sense for security reasons, et cetera. We did look at trying to build a to extend the committed 10-foot wide multi-use path over to Neal Middle School. But we ran into a problem, which is that all of the property outside of, so this property is just north of where the the city boundary ends. And so all Neal Middle School and all and a couple of the smaller adjacent parcels are all in the county. And so when we went to say, can we commit to building a sidewalk that extends out into the county, the county said, we won't maintain it. And so then we went to the city and we said, well, would you guys maintain it? And the city said, no, we can't. We can't maintain stuff that's out in the county. So we were ready to provide something like that, and we just ran into this jurisdictional issue of, you know, the city and the county, I think, are looking at ways to work better together, but they haven't figured that out yet. It's a it's a known issue and something we tried to address. So with that, we're available for questions.
Thank you. We have the group? All right. Know the rules of engagement. And they're asking everyone to please speak directly into the microphone so it can be picked up on the broadcast. These are new microphones, so just make sure it's you play with it so you're speaking directly into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Freeman, and I live at 1818 Southview Road in southeast Durham. Let me first state that Preserveral Durham is not opposed to this site being developed. We're often in the no zone, but we're hoping to get a better development. Wake Olive proposed development is inconsistent with the placetype map and zoning. Reference policy 171 is not fully met. There's no mix of housing types and sizes. There's no continuous walks sidewalks along 98. We request that this site be lower density with the new UDO proposed zone RB to due to the environmental sensitive area that it is and the existing traffic congestion and crashes in the area. UDO zoning, the proposed is RB, two units per acre. As of the UDO discussion that has happened February 5, 2025, the present zoning is RR, which is one unit per three acres. Wave Olive PDR is 17.270, the highest in the area. At four stories high, this structure is out of character for the area, and it will stick out like a sore thumb. The comprehensive plan is not being met. Three out of 27 policies are not met. Seven out of 27 policies are met at the state plan. So they're automatically given credit for not what not is not even on paper yet. Does Wake Olive have a site plan? I probably I would think not because Heartland did not have a site plan. A site plan is not usually required at this this level. It's not within a 15-minute safe walkable distance of stores, jobs and businesses. No parks, no continuous sidewalks, no or bike lanes, not existing not existing community character and so forth. It's listed. Side six amenities accessible only by car, no pedestrian crosswalks, no pedestrian signals at intersections, and refer to the amenities at the upper right-hand corner. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wanda Allen. My address is on record. I want you to note this slide here. Note the pink along this highway. Note the pink lines. There is not consistent sidewalks. This slide also shows a number of safety issues with residents walking and biking along Highway 98. The intersection does not meet ADA requirements. There's no crosswalks or pedestrian signals or proposed crosswalks with a five-lane traffic. Please note that we've already had one bicycle killed. That's someone's loved one. We're asking the developer to commit to providing continuous sidewalks on 98 in the county up to Sharon Road. Okay, this is very important, too. Safety and lack of infrastructure. We've got over 18,277 new dwellings that have been approved. 42,000 people. That's the size of Wake Forest. 42,000 people, that's the size of Wake Forest. Okay? That's not the end of it. We are going to have a new school opening up. Over 1,250 kids coming, they're going to come. It's a Durham charter school in 2025. This area has been blasted, we have been saturated, and we do not have the infrastructure. Safety concerns continue to be addressed. We continue to have crashes on Highway 98. Here, we've had 166 crashes within five years on point, 0.7 miles. 54 developments under construction will double the traffic on Highway 98. We need infrastructure. We don't need people to continue to die. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Pam Williams. I'm just going to do an overview of this map. This map, what's in light color is the Lick Creek Basin, and the Little Lick Creek is on the north side. But I want to bring to your attention that in Lick Creek and Little Lick Creek, we have 54 dense developments under construction now. That means most of those have been rezoned from rural residential to high density. 20 more have been approved and are pending construction. 42% are approved are townhouses. 42% of all the developments is townhouses. 21% are apartments, and then 37% approved are single-family homes. But as you can see, we have quite a few townhouses in the little green, and then we already have apartments around here. They're, Sharon Road Apartments is just less than a half a mile away from this apartment complex. This, I just want to show you the area, the square is Wake Olive. The red area that we talked about earlier is Heartland, and you can see all the developments that are going on in this area. We request our Durham leaders to push for improvements on NC 98 and Wake Forest Highway. We desperately need a four-lane facility through this area somewhere to help get the traffic around. And all those developments right here are under construction and more. Traffic congestion. From NC DOT, I got an email from them that said that NC 98 is 13,800 vehicles per day. Planning level daily capacity for a general two-lane major thoroughfare with center left-turn lanes with 45 miles per hour speeds for Piedmont area terrain. And that is what, 13,800, not the 17,000, as shown in zoning map report, because that number comes from a Florida table. Why are we using a Florida table for, I'm living in North Carolina. My word. And here is a gridlock, 98. Are we going to add 2,000 more cars at that intersection with the gridlock on NC 98? Thank you.
Pamela Andrews, I'm back with more emergency stuff. Okay, if you don't live in southeast Durham, you just really don't understand, is all I can say. But on July 3rd, a person was experiencing convulsions, yet EMS was stuck in the traffic that you see on the left. Calls from emergency services such as this fatality, which was June 16th on Highway 98, are often met with a similar response. No EMS units available to respond. They ask Wake County, they ask Orange County, they ask Person County for help, daily, but no response. They out of units. Update, Wake County sends back, no units available. Next slide. On June 5th of 2025, this article was shared, but it says 911 is in a crisis. Durham Director of Emergency Services Mark Lockhart stated, "We have not added any staffed transport units to the Durham County EMS since 2018. Our call volume is the same time has increased over 24%. Thus, this puts a strain on our EMS workers. The county is on track to have a record-breaking 60,000 calls of 911 help. Without any new positions and emergency vehicle service staff, we'll be stretching them extremely thin. One day, there were 35 calls on hold." Not my word, theirs. Next. Daily Durham asks Wake, Person, and Orange Counties for help with 911 calls, as I said earlier. Many days, all three counties have no units alone to help Durham. This is frequent, y'all. Next. The fire department is also in a crisis, as I told you earlier. This fire happened not a mile from where this proposed development is tonight. The emergency went there, 52 firefighters later, they put this thing out in 35 minutes, but two families were displaced. It burnt completely up. Okay? This is in a town home. Tall townhomes, apartments, and schools, they must have a ladder truck. We don't have but one ladder truck in this whole southeast Durham. Next. As I showed you before, here's your ladder trucks. We don't have the infrastructure, y'all. It's like a ticking time bomb out there. It's serious.
Tammy Soueia, Baptist Road. I'm going to continue on the fire, and you've seen this before, about the people being displaced. But I want to bring you attention to Station 8. When she said, we don't have the ladder truck. A four-story apartment building is 70 feet high. Most of the ladder trucks are 75-foot high. By geometry, you can't get a fire people close to apartment. It's going to put the fire people in danger. So I want you to think about, we don't have what we need to service the apartment. And then I want to touch on blasting, especially on this. We've had two recent issues of blasting. On July 1st, Solona, which is a developing site, they were, had a blast, their first blast for apartment renewal, but there was no DB leap, DB decibel reading. A person, 1.3 miles away, felt it in the ground, okay? This is Triassic Basin soil, you feel the blasting. I was on Baptist Road, a mile and a half from Falls Village. I felt the blasting. It happens. It can impact wells. Wells can cost you $10,000 if they're not, you know, or more if they're not lined. So blasting is an issue. And I also want to bring to the point that you've got a church across from this area that's on a well. So you're putting not only people with wells in danger, you're putting that church in danger. And then blasting, also, we've had so many people turn in issues on blasting, they've never had any remedy. The people on Junction Road, I know three years, going on three or four years now, they still don't have water. And you know how much it would cost to get to city water and to get those 10 homes? Like $600,000. They can't afford it. Blasting is an issue, and blasting may not happen initially, but it can happen gradually. Preservorale Durham, we are trying to change the blasting, but it's not happening. It's not there yet. So Triassic Basin soil, if you approve this, you're putting blasting at risk.
Good evening, Thomas Freeman, volunteer of Preservorale Durham. I'm going to break from my script just a bit. Sorry, Pam. Let me ask you, I see a lot of new faces out there. Searls, searls. If you don't know what it is, if you don't know what it, where it is, that is absolutely central to every conversation we have had here tonight. Searls. I'd like to move directly into commitments. The commitment that I would like to make is no disturbance on environmentally sensitive areas. These disturbance would include string buffers, no disturbances in the ESA to include the location of stormwater devices, tree removal, ground-stirring activities, retaining walls, drainage utilities, and the like. Next slide. I'm going to talk a little about sediment pollution in Lick Creek. I've mentioned that before. You'll see from the picture, August 5, 11, and 10, nothing changes. The Durham Solar Erosion Department states that there is an immediate, an immediate fine with scoopable sediment. What you see here, folks, is scoopable sediment, but no one is responsible because of the proximity, the distance away, and this is Lick Creek at Southview Road, because these construction sites are miles and miles away. Next slide. And this is how it works. The muck, the tomato soup, comes into the Stillen Basin, it sits there seven days. Then this muck is, and tomato soup is pumped off into what we refer to as the drainage ditches of Durham, which was natural biotic living creeks in Durham. Now there are the stormwater drainage ditches of Durham. Next slide. And in conclusion, we stress this time and time again, to the right of the screen, you see Lick Creek and that sediment flowing into Falls Lake, water supply for City of Raleigh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience in person that would like to speak on this case? On the Zoom, we have Donna Stainback.
Yes. I'm Donna Stainback, I live at 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road. I'd like to speak on the concerns and requests, kind of summarizing. Due to the damage by blasting into the neighbors and the proximity to the schools, we'd like to commit for no blasting. The tomato soup is in our creeks, we'd like the commitment to sampling of the water and effluent. The tree forest, deforestation creates heat islands. We'd like increase the tree covers to 30% to reduce stormwater and sediment runoff, and this will also help with the pollution. All buffers should be undisturbed, wetlands, streams, boundary buffers. The boundary buffer to be 0.8 opacity in lieu of the minimum 0.6. The maximum proposed impervious of 67% is only exceeding the minimum by 0.52 acres. Provide maximum of 50% impervious. The site is not contiguous, and they make, and we ask that you maintain the existing zoning or proposed zoning of RB per the UDO. The highest density in the area with minimum design and environmental commitments. The character of the neighborhood will drastically change with the rezoning to allow for a height of 70 foot. We like, we follow the existing place type. The apartment vacancy rate is 12.25%. More than 4% means there is more housing supply than demand. Why is this density needed? No continuous sidewalks are planned for the pedestrian or continuous bike lanes. The pedestrians crossing signals are not proposed, and we'd like to provide pedestrian crossing signals on NC 98. I'd also like to say that I attended the neighborhood.
Thank you. Your time is up. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak? Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak? Hearing none. The applicant wants to come forward and address any community concerns very quickly.
Yes, again, Toby Coleman, here on behalf of Redeeming Development Group. So a couple of things. First off, I know you guys know this, I just want to clarify, since there were some statements about how many, how many of the comp plan policies we met. We met 23 out of 27. So we've worked very hard, and I think Redeeming has worked very hard, to try to really listen to the neighbors and try to find ways to address some of these issues. Some of these issues, obviously, we can't address. As I noted, we can't build sidewalks on other people's property, and in fact, even when we've tried to build sidewalks to get to, for instance, Neil Middle School, we've run into issues with basically jurisdictional issues that really, we don't have any control over. We do, we have heard, you know, we have been discussing the crosswalks and the signals for a while. We are happy to and will make a proffer to provide those, provided that DOT approves of them. What we've been saying the entire time is we expect that they will be required, but it is a DOT right-of-way. I see Erin getting up.
Could you be specific about the crosswalks you're referring to?
Yeah, so we're referring to the crosswalks across 98 at the, at the, at the intersection So I think it's on both sides of the street.
This would be across nine, okay.
So south from the property on 98 onto, and then it would be on either side of Olive Branch Road, so the Olive Branch 98 intersection.
Okay.
So happy, happy to do that. I believe that there's, there are not, there's not signalization, but I've actually crossed that road a couple of times, so I can appreciate the need for it. In addition, we are willing to, you know, we have made the commitment to not disturb, you know, the northern portion of the property, and we will, we will go ahead and provide that, you know, currently, we have a few exceptions. We can, we will modify that such that utilities, temporary sedimentation erosion control devices, and stormwater management facilities are not allowed within that area. That would leave only greenway trails and stormwater conveyances as being permitted within that protected area. The only other thing I would note is that, is that I believe that there was some discussion about the roadway capacity. I believe that that may have confused Class 1 versus Class 2. 98 does have a, according to the staff report, and I think this is consistent, that has a capacity of about 17,000 cars. And again, we're trying to control that by basically limiting the number of cars that this project can generate. So whatever the, you know, the Traffic Engineers Society has a, has a book that basically estimates how many cars apartments will generate, or, you know, otherwise, many of you know that. And basically, whatever that cap is, you know, we cannot exceed 149 peak-hour trips. So if that means we can only build, you know, 190 apartment units and 10,000 retail square feet, that's what we'll have to do, so.
Can you clarify? We didn't quite follow what you were saying about the, the, I think you're, it seemed like you were trying to maybe edit one of the proffers?
That's right. So there was a-
Okay, could you be, could you be more clear? We didn't quite catch-
Yes, so there was a concern about the proffer that starts, no new construction improvements or new development, and it relates to the northern portion of the property. There's some exceptions there. And so basically, what we're proffering is, is that we would delete the exceptions after, between greenway trails and stormwater conveyances. So we would delete utilities as an exception that could be built in that area, temporary sediment, erosion control devices, and stormwater management facilities.
Those would no longer be exemptions from that proffer.
Okay, thank you very much. And we are available for questions.
Do we need clarification? No? All right. All righty, so at this time, the public hearing is now closed, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Zizi.
Thank you, Chair. Question for, for the applicant. Greatly appreciate the inclusion of non-residential square footage. Would you be willing to commit to a minimum required amount in addition to the maximum amount?
We've been, so we are, we are looking at that, so I don't know that we're ready to do that today, but that is something that we are, we are looking at. We do expect that that is, we expected that would be a question, so don't have an answer for you yet, but expect to have one going forward.
Are these units rentals, or are they for sale units?
Are they rentals, the apartments? We would expect that the apartments would be rentals.
Gotcha, thank you.
Commissioner Ritchie.
For Neil Middle School, is there the capacity to create a, or to commit to the possibility of a trail, basically making it so that the way that the lots are built out, someone might be able to create a trail even if it's just a single path between the middle school? Because also knowing middle schoolers, they're going to build that themselves anyway.
Yeah, that's a good point. Honestly, so this is something where we worked, you know, basically, we worked hand-in-hand with the schools. And so the schools were the ones that said, we don't want, we don't want that. So I mean, I suppose that I could go back to Kristen Brook- Kristen Brookshire and say, hey, this is something the planning commission asked for. And, you know, can we build a stub or something like that, you know, into the forest? But, you know, that's, I, at this point, that's sort of where our conversation ended was we talked about, you know, what can we do to try to address this thing? Because we were committed to trying to do it too. And the schools were pretty adamant that they didn't want anything coming in the back, that they viewed it as a security threat and some other issues.
If, if I can also weigh in. So we've been having a conversation with the applicant about a potential for extending that sidewalk. And they've been open, along Wake Forest Highway to Neil Middle School, and they are, they are open to that idea. But we're still trying to work through some issues regarding jurisdiction, regarding maintenance. And there's also some, as, as Deputy City Attorney Aaron Miles stated, there's some, some weirdness regarding state law and the ability for the city to annex that state right-of-way not adjacent to the property. So we're still working through that. We're, the applicant is committed to, to still trying to figure out a solution to that. And we're going to work on that between now and the city council.
Vice Chair Shigeras and then Commissioner Woke.
Yes, I have two questions. First off, can you make a commitment to no blasting? I'm concerned about the effect it would have on the school. Durham Public Schools are run by the county and funded by the county. So any damage to that school would fall on the county. Can you make a commitment to no blasting?
We cannot make a commitment to no blasting. I will say however, that based on preliminary studies of the site and the way the topography works, the expectation is it will be what is known as a fill site. In other words, they will be bringing dirt in rather than taking dirt out, which makes it far less likely that they will need to do blasting. They haven't done any of the, again, somewhat repeating what Mr. Goach said in the prior case, because they have not done geotech testing yet, and even if they did, it's of limited use without knowing exactly where you're putting homes. They're not in a position to, to offer that.
Okay, and my second question is, how can you limit trip generation to 149 trips?
Peak trips, peak hour trips.
Peak hour trips?
Yeah. So the distinction being there's a total daily and then there's a peak hour trip. And we focused in on, on limiting the peak hour trips.
How would you do that? I mean, if there's 210 apartments and 10,000 retail?
The, the way that you do that, so-
You can like tell people you can't drive here?
No, so the way that it's done is, is that there is a, again, there's a, there's a, basically a book that's put out by the Society of Traffic Engineers. And I may be mangling their names, so my apologies to all traffic engineers out there. But they, what it does is it says, you know, for a mid-rise apartment, every unit generates X amount per day and X amount peak hour. Similarly, for a restaurant or a retail store per square foot, this is what's, what's generated or per seat or whatever. And so basically what you do is, and this is, is that when you go in for a site plan, you have to do that calculation as part of the site plan, as part of the site planning process. And basically what this condition, or what this text commitment does is to say, whatever you put on there, you cannot exceed that 149 peak hour trips based on those, on the, you know, nationally accepted estimates of, of traffic generation.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Woke.
Hey, I think my question might be for transportation. So I noticed on, the numbers are different, but on the same road and in the same general area. So capacity for this project says 17,700 for 98. And on the next project, the capacity is 15,900.
Hi, so Erlene Thomas. So with the capacity, there are reductions that are assumed for, you know, if, if that section is not signalized. So in this case, that intersection is signalized and it has a little higher capacity versus down the road, which is not. That also may not have turn lanes. So there would also be a reduction for that. You're welcome.
Commissioner Kopack.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, one of the clear requests I heard as well from the community was around the, the tree cover. And what's the potential to increase that on the site, you know, given what you have, you know, what you're planning?
Well, we've, we've increased it to 21% tree cover. We'll certainly take a look to see, see what we can do. But the-
I mean, you run different scenarios, right? I'm sure on this. And I know you want to reserve maximum flexibility for yourself. But what would it take to commit to doing 30% tree cover for the site?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I would have to ask, I'd have to talk to my client. I don't know that we're prepared. We've run this scenario at this point for 30%. That was, we've not received that specific request or I've not seen that specific request until tonight.
What's the highest scenario you've run it for?
I'll ask David.
I'm David. I work with the development team. We haven't run it like through 21, 22, 23, kind of bumping up against, but you start talking about 30%, it's like a 9% increase on a 12 acre size. It's a fairly, would be a fairly big dent in potential yield, especially with trying to fit in the commercial stuff on the front. So the stuff that, like the units just got pushed back into like sort of the nooks and crannies of the site. So yeah, I don't think we could commit to 30% tree cover. We, I think there are and our plans have allowed for like impervious space on the site. Some of that like, you know, just sort of naturally happens between units, but also like sort of common space for the people and the apartments to use. So, and I think that's reflected in our impervious commitment to be below the maximum threshold, if that's helpful.
Thank you. And I also just want to second the comments made by my fellow commissioner about the trail, as well as to encourage the further work about the sidewalk. You know, those sound like both good opportunities to create more connectivity with this site and the surrounding area. And I understand and respect that the schools have a position on it. But I think in terms of our mandate and what the comprehensive plan calls for, that those are great projects to continue to pursue as part of this if it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Newkurchin.
I have a question about the watershed. Lick Creek is endangered. It's all, it's already federally designated as an endangered watershed area. How will your, how will your construction protect that creek? How will the run, how will you protect it from being polluted by runoff and discharge of polluted water?
Well, the first thing that we will do is comply with the city standards. I mean, so the city and the county have already adopted standards well above the state minimum requirement. So the, the, you know, in response to concerns from a lot of these neighbors, this planning commission and ultimately the council and the, and the county board went to the state and got approval for, for increased sedimentation and erosion control rules, which are, which are, everybody's subject to. And that includes flocculants, which are things you put in the water to, you know, get the sedimentation down. It includes larger ponds. And, and so, and we've committed to 100 year stormwater. We'll take, we can take a look at, at other things. One of the things that happened here, just to give you a sense on, on how hard we've been trying to address the neighborhood's concerns. So when we first heard this request, we said, well, what do you want us to do? You know, like how can we, what, what is it that you guys want us to do? How can we try to address this issue on? And they, they sent us, they said, go talk to Sound Rivers. So we went and talked to Sound Rivers. And Sound Rivers said, no, this is the same group that said, we want flocculants, we want this, we want that. They said flocculants don't work or they, they depend on who's applying it. And they, they had some other concerns and they said, what we really want is monitoring of turbidity. We said, what in the heck is turbidity? Turbidity is basically how, like how much suspended solids are in the water. I see Commissioner Woke nodding. He probably know all about this.
Hell yes.
Please forgive me if I mangle any of the science. But, so we've, we've spent a long time trying to figure out, well, what can we do? What can be enforceable in talking with county stormwater? Because one of the issues here is, is that unlike a lot of typical text commitments, sedimentation and erosion control requirements by state law have to be approved by the sedimentation control board before they're approved. And so it's not clear that we could commit to any standard that would be enforceable without going through the sedimentation control board. We've talked with county stormwater about what else can we do? But there's no, you know, what, basically what county stormwater said is we regulate scoopable, scoopable sediment is what they say. We don't regulate turbidity. It's not, it's just not something that they do. And so they don't have a standard that they would suggest. There's other, other states that have standards, but it's not clear that those would apply. And so one of the difficulties we've had frankly is just figuring out, you know, what more can we do? And so again, we'll, we'll take a look at, at, at increasing the size of the sediment erosion control basins. But in trying to find those sort of more creative solutions, it's been a challenge.
I imagine so. I imagine so. Would you consider doing a baseline data collection? Because there's no, there's no provision in your proposal to collect any data of a baseline to see if your project or to monitor your project as it progresses, whether or not it's impacting Lick Creek in its fragile, very fragile environment.
Well, again, the, the question is, what does that mean? Right? So baseline data collection can mean a lot of things, right? And so that's where, and that's where we were suggested, like can we do turbidity? And we, and so we've been looking seriously at it. And in fact, I talked with Ryan Eaves, with county stormwater this afternoon about that. And basically what Ryan said is, look, if you're gonna do it, like never done it before. And if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do the data collection, you know, I had questions on, well, how's that work? You know, what is the enforcement mechanism if, you know, you hit certain numbers? You know, all these questions that like just, they're not written anywhere. So how would you even figure it out? And so we're sort of stumbling through the dark here on, on what it would be. But basically he said, look, if you're going to think about it, you need to figure out where you're going to collect it. You know, timeline, things like that. These are all things that we're just trying to work out, but we haven't gotten there yet. And, and you know, frankly, I, the reason, part of the reason, among other reasons that we don't have a, even a proposal there is I don't want to get, well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to commit to something that staff says they can't enforce. And so what we've been trying to do is say, what can be done, right? What can be enforceable? And so it looks like it, you know, it, so that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay, enforceable then is your, is your criteria? Can it be enforced? Is that the criteria with which you will proceed?
Well, can it be enforced and what it, what it, is it, is it feasible, right? So is it, you know, you don't want to put-
And is it doable, right?
Is it doable? Yeah. And so that's what we're trying to do. And, and you know, I'm a lawyer. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in any way an environmental engineer. I couldn't say, you know, where you should put it and how-
Have you consulted with environmental engineers regarding this?
Are there any, we need to move on. Any, any other commissioners that have questions? Yes, Commissioner Ritchie.
This should be quick. I think it's a question for staff. Is there any precedent behind providing funding or sort of a set aside for a nonprofit to do, that does testing, that's regularly sort of investing in places like Lick Creek?
No precedent that I'm aware of.
Great. Just a question. Is that something that the developer would be willing to make a one-time investment in?
If I understood right, you're kind of asking like a fee in lieu type process?
Sort of like giving to Durham Public Schools, but you're giving to a nonprofit that's doing the testing.
Yeah, I think we would just need to run some costs on that. Like, you know, is it $400,000 to, you know, plow through, you know, a mile of trees? Like maybe not, but if it's something, you know, less than that, maybe more reasonable. Something that we'd be willing to look at for sure.
Great, thank you.
Any additional commissioner questions, concerns? Are we ready to move this case forward? So may I have a motion?
Chair, as it relates to case Z240038 Wake Olive, I move that we send this case forward with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kopack and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeras to move case Z240038 Wake Olive forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeras.
No.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
No.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopack.
Yes.
Commissioner Nynkerker.
No.
Commissioner Piantak.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion passes seven to four.
Thank you, everyone. Last case of the evening, zoning map change, case Z25002 Ravenstone Commercial. May we have the staff report, please?
Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeras and planning commissioners, I am once again up here to present Z250002 Ravenstone Commercial. The site is a 2.42 acre parcel located at 5204 Wake Forest Highway requesting to rezone from commercial general, from commercial center with a graphic development plan to commercial general with a textual development plan. The proposal would allow most uses in the commercial general district with the exclusion of those prohibited on the development plan. Again, the current zoning is commercial center with a graphic development plan that allows for retail sales and services. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial general with a textual development plan that will allow for all uses within the commercial general except agricultural uses, educational facilities, passenger terminals, minor or major utilities, wireless or unipole communication facilities, electronic gaming, nightclub or bar, drive-in theater, golf course, country swim or tennis clubs, paintball and payday lenders. The site is adjacent to an existing commercial zoned shopping center and backs up to residential rural, residential suburban 10 and PDR zoning. The aerial map better shows the site's adjacency to the existing shopping center. The property is currently designated suburban commercial on the placetime map. The proposed zoning is generally consistent with this designation. The development plan proffers to limit the uses that I mentioned earlier. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the neighborhood meeting guidelines on February 18th, 2025 and June 24th, 2025. Each meeting had four and five attendees respectively. No comments have been received by staff in relation to this case on the Durham rezoning explorer. The proposal is generally consistent with the placetime map designation of suburban commercial and two, and two out of two of those placetime policies. And it's consistent with 11 of 20 comprehensive plan policies. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come forward, please?
Pull that screen off. That's the Lick Creek screen on my, my screen here. Good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeras, board members. Happy to be with you this evening. My name is Jeremy Anderson. I'm a landscape architect and principal with Thomson Hutton here in Durham. Thank you, staff, for your presentation. As outlined by, by staff, this is a fairly straightforward request. We're zoning, a rezoning from commercial to commercial, from commercial center that did restrict the use to only retail to commercial general. Basically opens up a larger list of uses for potential development. This site is 2.4 acres within the Ravenstone Commercial Shopping Center that you saw on the map earlier. It's kind of unique. It's a landlocked parcel. It is locked behind or located behind the Goodwill. That's along Highway 98. There's a Dollar General. It's located behind that. It's also located behind the shopping center itself. So it's- center itself, so it's kind of isolated and it's kind of hidden from view, which makes it very difficult to develop as retail. So it was zoned to that CC with retail only in 2006, and needless to say, has not been developed in those nearly 10 years. So the owner is looking to rezone this to commercial general, just to open up the allowable uses, to see if they can generate some interest to develop the property. It's sitting there vacant, it's adjacent to commercial, adjacent to residential, and there's an opportunity there to develop it, just hasn't moved forward with the retail to date. I do want to touch on just the 11 out of the 12 comp plan policies, it's kind of a lower score, so I wanted to kind of touch on those, and the nine that we weren't hitting, just to highlight those. Five of those are, five of the nine that we did not hit are directly related to residential. So although residential is an allowed use now, it's probably unlikely it will be residential, it's a 2.4 acre site, you know, you could do some townhomes there, but that may be 16, 20 townhomes at most, apartments, this could be a small apartment site, 30, 40 units, probably not something that someone would do. So those five policies that are residential, that kind of are, we don't meet, residential development's unlikely, but we do want to take it off the table. We wanted to leave it there, if somebody came and presented a proposal to the owner, we'd be willing to, to look at that. One of the policies we didn't meet was related to auto dependency, that's basically what's there today. I mean, it's, it's a commercial center, it says it's, it's auto-dependent, it's going to commercial zoning, so it's the same thing, so it's kind of a wash on that one. The additional tree coverage, again, it's a 2.4 acre site, so it's a little tough to offer additional tree save. And for relation, a site under two, two acres is the, is the minimum size that you have to do tree save for a commercial property, we're 2.4 acres, so if we even did anything above the normal, it would be pretty nominal, so we didn't offer anything additional, given the, the size of the site. Native plants, I'll just be honest, we didn't just cover that one, we'd be happy to make a proffer, again, a small site, we'll have some VUA plantings, we'll have some buffer plantings, we're not sure what the development is, but we'd be happy to make a proffer this evening to do trees and shrubs, all those native plants. So I'll put that one up there right now. And then green infrastructure was the last one we didn't hit, and it's just too early, we do not know what the development plan will be. It could be commercial, it could be office, it could be residential, so we don't have anything to offer at this time for green infrastructure, so we'll leave that one there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, that has not signed up? Please go up to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, good evening, I'm Rebecca Freeman, and I am, my address is on file. I wanted to speak tonight to this very briefly. This seems unusual to ask for a blank approval for either commercial or residential, when a commercial versus residential would seem to be more definitive in relation to surroundings. In this case, when considering the needs of the community, there has been little to know additional commercial property development. No amenities developed, while 50-plus, 20, 74 developments have been approved for about 15,000 dwelling units approved in the Lick and Little Creek area. There's, there's just not the, the development of anything commercial. No amenities, no amenities to walk to, no amenities to go to, in this area. Also considering the site, expanding the current shopping center to improve additional amenities would be preferable to adding more housing. Furthermore, the site is snuggled in, as he described, between existing commercial and not a favorable site for residential. How would you like to be looking at the back of a store, when you're residential, the grocery store, whatever, when you're in an apartment? So I would really encourage you to consider this only commercial, we needed more amenities out there, and, and less of the apartments and dwelling units, because we've got plenty of those coming now and coming online. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on the Zoom that would like to speak? Please use the raise your hand feature. We have Keith Davis. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Keith Davis, I live at 108 Grand Ameer Court. I used to be the HOA president for Ravenstone Community. We're not opposed to other commercial or amenities there, like the woman that just spoke before. Residential would totally be not well. That property also backs up with our storm drain. We have an agreement with Pathmark, I mean, excuse me, Pathmark. We have an agreement with Food Lion, because we share our stormwater, so they help us maintain our wet pond and our wet land, that we have on Rondelay and also on Weather, Weather Van Gogh. We would like to know if they're gonna connect to our storm drain, which we would like to also be compensated for, as Food Lion is also compensating us. Also, the fact that, that area is very dense, it is snuggled in between apartment, we need to be a little bit more tighter with, with what they're going to build there. Apartments, letting it be able to be apartments or commercial living structures would not be satisfactory. That has to be zoned strictly commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mimi Kessler.
Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mimi Kessler, I have a question, because of concerns with the, the really dangerous situation on Highway 98, I am wondering if the, this development will connect with the ones near it, so that it can use the already established entrance and exits onto 98 and to Sharon Road.
Thank you. We'll get those answered. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak? Please use the raise your hand feature. All right, with the applicant, please come back up and address those, I think, three or four concerns we heard.
Yeah, Jeremy Anderson, Thomas &amp; Hutton. Let me start with the traffic one that Mimi just asked. Yeah, this parcel is landlocked, it has no frontage actually on a public road, so it would use the existing driveway, I think that the Dollar, excuse me, the Goodwill has, that's where the drive, the access would be. So it would share the driveway to the shopping center and then directly through the Goodwill. I may have spoke too much about the residential, again, I, I agree with some of the comments, there's a lot of residential development, we've heard it this evening. It's commercial, we think it's gonna be commercial, we just want to leave the options open should someone come and think there's a residential option there, but again, a 2.4 acres parcel, I've been doing this long enough to know that there's very few developers that, especially in this location, looking at the back of a shopping center, that would look at this as viable residential option. But I'm just being honest, commercial general is, does allow for it, so, but it's not something that we've got actively looking at, so.
Storm drain question?
You could repeat what that question was.
So it was the H, former HOA Ravenstone president wanted to know if that, would you have to connect to their storm drain as Food Lion does and compensate them?
I'll be honest, I'd have to look further into that and see. I do know that drains down through the south of our site, down through the neighborhood, I, we, we would connect or drain that way, but I don't know what pipe it's connecting to, so we can look into that and talk to the shopping center and see where that drainage is going and what we connect to. We'll talk to the HOA about that.
Okay. I think that it's all I heard. All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for commissioner discussion and questions. Vice Chair Shigeris.
For the applicant, do you already have permission from the Goodwill to connect and use their driveway to connect to the, what I'm-
Yes, there's an existing access easement there. Yep.
So you've already talked to the Goodwill?
It's, yeah, it's plotted, there's a plotted access easement, I think it's even, the driveway's cut in towards it, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? If not, if we're ready to move this case forward, I would like to receive it.
Before we do that really quick, just to confirm, was that a formal proffer for native species and required plantings? Thank you.
All right, if we are ready to move this case forward, may I have a motion? If not, we'll continue with the questions.
In the case of, case number, in the case of Z250002 Ravenstone Commercial, I'd like to move this forward with a favorable recommendation.
It's been moved by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move case Z25002 Ravenstone Commercial forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopac.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pianta.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Wolk.
Yes.
The motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you. Old Business Committee updates, don't think we have any. When the, when, Aaron, when the UDO is ready, I think we're gonna have to appoint a new committee, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are we still gonna have a, need a committee for any, when the UDO is ready for review?
That's a good question, I might turn over to-
Because we previously had one, and I think that Gary, Commissioner Cutright was the chair, he's gone, Commissioner Sees was on there, he's gone, so if we, we probably, that's might be something we need to do at the September meeting.
We can certainly put that on the agenda under New Business, about constituting a new committee to review the new UDO, yes.
Okay. New Business, upcoming officer elections, you want me to, you're gonna say, or you want me to say something?
Yes, so per your rules of procedure, it is time to run for election again, for chair, vice chair, we only have two offices on this commission. Chair Cameron is term limited, she cannot be appointed as, she cannot be elected as chair. So the rules of procedure state that, once a city appointee, appointee as Chair Cameron is, has been the chair, and you're going to be elected a new officer, that new president, that new chair needs to come from a county, be a county appointee. And the count, the chair and the vice chair cannot come, be appointed by the same jurisdiction. So the new chair needs to be county, and the new vice chair needs to be city. So that means that for chair, your choices are Vice Chair Shigeris and Commissioners Capers, Kopac, Neinkirchner, Williams, and Wolk. You all are eligible to become chair. For a vice chair, you only have four choices, current Chair Cameron, and Commissioners Bailey, Chakowski, and Ritchie, since Commissioner Wen has resigned. So those are your choices. We will do elections at the end of next meeting, so Chair Cameron, you will be the chair next month, and then we will move the gavel over to your successor next month, at the end of the meeting. Don't dance too much. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
When is the retreat? Is the retreat before?
Yeah, no, that's, that's the next one, it'll be after.
So we have not scheduled a retreat yet, that was once something I wanted to bring to your attention, it is about that time. You've been, this would, you've run retreats the last two years, but they are not required by your rules of procedure, and it's completely up to you. There have been two different formats, one format in 2023, you all came in for about five hours to the, basically a half day, came into the planning department, we did a series of discussions, a series of presentations. Last year, we did a more scaled down version, we had a shorter, we had a shorter agenda at the end of the October meeting, and then had a, a series of presentations that lasted about two hours, we were able to feed you at that meeting, so you did get dinner, don't worry. And we did try to shorten the agenda for that meeting, so we weren't here too long, and we didn't keep you too long. You're not required to have a retreat, we don't have a huge number of topics to bring to you at this time, we could potentially bring you a legislative update, Bo Dubrinsky could do a UDO update like he did last year, but it's really up to the pleasure of the commission as to whether or not you want to have a retreat, and if you do want to have a retreat, we would be more than happy to entertain what those topics might be. The timing could be a, a bit difficult, it would be tough for us to, you know, get some topics and get them ready for your September Planning Commission, where the agenda is not too long. October, though, right now is looking at seven items on your agenda, so we would not want to be doing a, a, a retreat after that. So we might be looking at November for a retreat if we choose to have one.
Why am I raising my hand on the chair? So I, I really think, because we have so many new commissioners, that we need to probably take time out, find a day, or half a day that works for everyone, and go over some topics that we did in 2023. I think hearing from the city attorney was helpful, about what, how do you ask your questions carefully, how do you word your comments? How do you, you know, so, so we're not getting in trouble with suggesting proffers or things like that, I think that, that was very helpful for folks that were previously on the commission, and just, I probably will think of a couple of other things, but I know that was very helpful. And, so anyway, that, that's, that's my, my vote, to if we're gonna do it in November, if we roll that further back, maybe find something that works.
Well, we, if we're, if you all are willing to come in, either on an off night or during the day, we could do it sooner, I was just trying to not add a retreat on to an already pretty packed October agenda. So what we can do is, we can set out, send out a doodle poll, see some dates that work for as many pe, some dates and times that work for as many people as possible, and look to schedule something sooner, it would be nice to do it sooner than November. I'd like to do it in late September to October, if possible, but we, we will make those accommodations and, and find a date that works for as many people as possible.
And if anyone else has any other topics of suggestion, it would be good to hear from everyone. Commissioner Chakowski?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think more is more here, and if we can, if we can find that extra time, and I know it's a sacrifice from everybody, but I think certainly, I would greatly appreciate that, and I think it would be a valuable use of time, so just want to plus one, what the Chair said.
Okay, sounds good, then that's, that's what we'll look to do, and if you do have any topics that you would like us to cover, please feel free to email them to myself, to Peyton, to Andy, all three of us would be great, and we can do our best to accommodate those topics, absolutely. And the sooner the better, so we can make sure that we have speakers lined up and everything.
Any staff announcements?
That, though, those were, yep, that's what I've got.
All right, we are adjourned.